I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And at being, um, 5:32, we will open a public hearing in regards to 42 South Main Street.
Before we start, I want to kind of give you a little bit of an overview of how this works. You are sitting as a finder of fact, and you're going to listen to evidence. The evidence will be sworn. We're making a file of all the evidence that's going to be presented to you. At the end of the evidence, you will go into closed session and deliberate and issue findings of fact and conclusions of law. And either you'll find it to be a nuisance in a particularized way, and if you do, you will try to define what it's going to take to remove the nuisance from the property. You first have to determine if there is a nuisance, and then secondly, the remedy. The property owner, if you find that there is a nuisance and there is a remedy, the property owner gets 20 days to have a first shot at remedying the nuisance. There's a right of appeal, and because this is going to be under oath, and there will be a record made of everything that we do, the appeal would be to a judge. They would look at the record, and if you had substantial evidence to support your decision, it will be affirmed. So this is your time to be a jury or a judge. Now, the testimony will start with the city's representative, and she will testify from her personal knowledge of what she's seen. You're really looking at this thing at the condition of the property today, not the history of it, but in its current condition, because that's how you fashion what a remedy might be. I'm not going to try to prejudice you by saying that you must find that there is a nuisance. You might find it isn't a nuisance. But we'll give you a copy of the city code that the city officials have used to deal with the property owner, okay? Anybody have any questions before we get started?
So we should hear from Carla.
Carla will be sworn.
Ms. Ray, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth in that convention?
I do.
We can start by having you state your name.
My name is Carla Bullock. I am the Community Development Administrator for the City of St. Genevieve.
And in that capacity, do you also have responsibilities for receiving complaints about nuisances?
Yes, I do.
And did you receive a complaint about this property at 42 South Main Street?
Yes, I did.
Were you able to determine who the record owner of that property is?
Yes, I was. Based on the St. Genevieve County Assessor's data, the owner is Deborah S. Gegg.
And tell the board what efforts you made to give her notice of this hearing.
I had begun by trying to notify her via telephone. I left her voicemail messages. I tried to contact her via Facebook messages, emails. I mailed her a letter, which was returned to me undeliverable.
Did you send one registered and one non-registered?
Yes, I did.
Did they both come back?
No.
Okay. The registered came back as not undeliverable necessarily, but it was not accepted.
That is correct.
And then you published the notice of the hearing in the local newspaper?
Yes, I did.
And how many times did you run that?
I ran it for one week.
Okay. And was it at least, oh, I'm sorry, this is a continued hearing today, is that correct?
That is correct.
The notice that you published had a date of?
July 28, 2016.
All right, so I'm going to back up a little bit. After you published in the newspaper, were you contacted by a representative of Deborah Gegg?
I was contacted prior to that.
Prior to the notice?
Prior to the notice that was published.
All right. And this was by email?
This was by telephone call by her attorney, Mr. Dwayne Johnson. And then he followed that up with an email.
And did Mr. Johnson deny that the property was in, maybe in a condition that needed to be rectified?
He was unaware of the condition of the property.
So then you did send him a list of the things that you thought needed to be rectified?
I sent him a copy of the letter that I had originally sent to Ms. Gegg.
Okay. Do you have a copy of that letter handy?
Yes, I do.
Could you read it to the board, please?
Dear Ms. Gegg, I have made numerous attempts to reach you via telephone, Facebook, and email to discuss the situation at the property located at 42 South Main Street. I have taken over for Petrie Powell, with whom you had previously dealt with regarding your property. During that time, the city agreed to allow you until January 1, 2016, to get the house and business portions of the interior at 42 South Main Street cleaned up so that the proper occupancy inspection could be conducted. It was not until after that deadline that you informed us that you were having financial difficulties, car trouble, and job distance issues. The city has been very patient with your situation. However, we are at a point where something must be done. In a letter dated February 1, 2016, the city gave you the following options, which this letter was a letter that Petrie Powell had written prior to my taking over this position. Number one, that the city would board up the property per our duties under the municipal code, Chapter 500, Section 500, dot 260 to 350. To prevent you from occupying for any amount of time, the structure is in this condition. The structure is not habitable because it does not have water service and cannot be properly inspected due to the amount of household items, junk, debris, furniture, and other items that have been made the house impossible to inspect and a severe hazard to health and welfare. We have the authority to board up the house, but obviously do not want to deprive you of your property. We have given you ample time to get the house cleared out so that it can be inspected. Number two, the second option is for the city to match you up with a charitable organization that can clear the house, business shop, out of, over the course of a week or a weekend. This has been done with other citizens to ensure their safety. Since your claim that your work hours and work distance do not allow you to do the work, it is time for someone else to step in. Number three, you can place the building up for sale as-is and allow a buyer to deal with the contents and the issues of health and safety. We understand there is an interested buyer. Along with the violations inside the building, there are also nuisance violations with the outside of the property. Under Municipal Code 215, Section 215 dot 010, 080, 130, and 325, you are maintaining a nuisance by lying the accumulation of junk, ponding water, tall weeds and grass, and debris in and around the yard, and the abandonment of a vehicle unlicensed and left on the property. You are hereby given notice to abate the nuisance noted in Chapter 215 of the municipal code within seven days of the date of this letter, or by Thursday, June 2, 2016. If the nuisances are not abated by June 2, the city will take measures to begin the process to abate the nuisances, and the cost incurred for such abatement will be applied as a special tax lien on this property. Additionally, you are hereby given notice to abate the violations noted in Chapter 500 of the municipal code within 30 days of the date of this letter, or by Saturday, June 25, 2016. If the violations are not abated by June 25, 2016, the city will take measures to begin the process of abatement. Of the violations and the cost incurred for such abatement will be applied as a special tax lien on this property. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter.
All right, so we're not complaining today about her occupancy or alleged occupancy of the building without an occupancy permit?
That is correct. At this point, it was just to make sure to take care of the outside.
We're complaining about the second piece, which would be the condition of the property that we were going to represent to the board as a nuisance.
Yes.
All right, so there are some ordinances that you've cited. Do you have a copy of each one of those ordinances for each of the aldermen here today? Were these ordinances printed off of the city's website that collects our codified ordinances?
Yes, they were.
And you represent to the board that these are true and accurate copies of the published code of ordinances of these three respective pieces, right?
That is correct.
So when we start with 215-010, it's a long-running, unpunctuated paragraph that says, in effect, "Any act done or committed or suffered to be done or committed by any person or substance or thing kept, maintained, and placed or found in or upon any public or private place within the city which is unreasonably injurious, dangerous, annoying, unsafe, or offensive to the public, any accumulations of deposit of any vehicular or equipment, parts, appliances, junk, or material of any nature upon open ground, or any accumulation of food or other materials improperly stored or disposed of inside or outside of building where such accumulation or deposit may constitute an attractive nuisance or danger to children or a possible breeding ground for vectors," I'm not sure what a vector is, "vermin, rodents, or other animals, any pond or pool of stagnant water which is unreasonably dangerous, injurious, dangerous, or offensive, unhealthy, or unsafe to the public." That's what 215-010 says, correct?
Among other things.
There's more to it than that. And then there's a separate ordinance on abandoned vehicles or junk. That's 215-080, correct?
Yes.
And then vegetation, correct?
Yes.
All right, so what's happened is the city has ordinances that generally describe nuisances in a long description of types of nuisances that could range from slaughterhouses and so forth. But we have a specific ordinance on junk vehicles being on property in the city. And then the last one is vegetation. Now, describe for the board, if you would, how we regulate vegetation.
The city ordinance is that vegetation is, the grass and weeds are not to be in excess of seven inches.
All right. And so when we occasionally hear from people in the community about the neighbor has tall grass, or what do you normally do when you get a tall grass complaint?
Normally, I make an attempt to contact them by phone first, just to, just as a friendly gesture. If they do not comply, then a formal violation would follow.
All right. So once a formal violation is filed, you can actually take that through municipal court?
That is correct.
And we've done that in the past. We have a weak court time to time. But there's a separate and parallel method for dealing with nuisances, which is what's happening today, where the Board of Aldermen, if they find a nuisance and determine that it needs to be abated, and the property owner doesn't do it, if the board finds that to be true, the cost of that abatement, after the property owner first has their shot at it, can be assessed upon the property as a lien, as a tax lien. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's here today on that methodology. We could have at the same time taken it through Judge Hill's camp, but you had more than one thing going on here, correct?
Yes.
And you had neighbors that were complaining?
Yes.
And, okay, so let's try to deal with what specifically, oh, I'm sorry, you have some photographs that you've taken?
I do.
When were they taken?
I took photographs today.
Do those photographs truly and accurately depict the condition of the property that you observed today?
I believe so, yes.
Are you prepared to handle that?
Yes, I am.
And you may have to share.
Okay.
All right, Carla, your photographs, of course, are what they are.
Yes.
But based on your observation, what did you observe at the property that you believe could be considered by the board as a nuisance? What did you see there?
The vegetation around the structure was tall. There is a tree limb that was down from the storm.
Let me interrupt you.
Certainly.
You have prepared a list of things that you've observed. Would you refer to that, please?
Sure.
This will move along. But go ahead and read what's going to be in your report.
We've gone through pretty well everything so far. I mean...
I'm referring to item A on your list.
Okay. All right, so under Section 215 dot 010 of the nuisances, nuisance code, all buckets, barrels, laundry bottles, planters, pond, coolers, et cetera, that are located in the backyard, they need to be removed. They serve as a place for water to collect and create a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Additionally, any trash cans need to have a lid to avoid the collection of water.
Okay. And with the Zika scare going on, that's of great concern to you and to the neighbors?
Yes.
What else did you see?
Tarp's, household garbage, plastic bags, cardboard boxes, clothing, furniture, junk, building materials, and lumber located in the backyard that need to be removed.
All right. And then did you make a finding regarding a certain motor vehicle?
There is a truck in the backyard that did have plates on it previously, when I had gone over, that had expired in May of 2016. When I went today, there were no plates on the truck. I was informed by Ms. Gegg's attorney that she, her intent was to have plates put on the vehicle by the end of July or the first week of August.
So her attorney acknowledged that there's no plates on it currently, and that she hoped to do this. But this is not the first conversation you had with her about that vehicle?
Correct.
Okay. Then did you make an observation about the vegetation?
Yes, that the weeds and grass around the entire property need to be maintained below seven inches at all times, and that the vegetation around the entire property need to be maintained properly or removed to avoid overgrowth. And the broken tree limbs must be removed.
All right, now, because of your efforts dealing with her attorney, has there been some progress made towards the original complaint?
Yes, there was.
Can you tell the board what you've managed to get out of the property owner?
They cut the grass. They removed one of the large tree limbs that was still attached in the tree. And they removed some of the trash, but it has not all been removed. And the buckets that were open containing water, they turned upside down.
Okay, now, this is an opportunity for any board member to ask Ms. Bullock any particular questions you have.
Carla, do you think she's making strides to take care of this, or to the point where, you know, she's just doing a little cover-up, putting a little makeup on it right now? Or you think she's really trying to get this taken care of?
I think she wants to get this taken care of, and this is just my opinion. I think she's overwhelmed. But I think she wants to, but then there are some things I think she doesn't want to get rid of, too, because of whatever sentimental or other reasons.
Now, you were advised by her attorney that she's employed, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that she was working tonight, couldn't be here?
That is correct.
And that he probably wouldn't be here?
That is correct.
But he acknowledged that she knew about this hearing and chose to work instead of coming?
Yes.
But that she is gainfully employed?
Yes.
We don't really know when she got started on the project, correct?
When she got started cleaning things up?
Yes.
My first contact with her was on July 15, when I found out she was at the property to attempt to clean things up.
All right. So did you go to the property and have conversation with her?
I did.
And can you tell the board what she said?
She said that she had a lot of things going on, that she was not able to, she didn't really have a place to stay full-time, and that she was just starting to work, and that getting down here was difficult because of the time constraint that had previously been set on the amount of hours that she could be in the property, because she couldn't stay in the property without having occupancy. That she was working up to seven days a week, and that she was trying to get herself back on track with her finances, and wanted to correct the property, but didn't have the time necessarily to come down and take care of it in a manner that we expected it to be done.
Did she have a paid helper there that day?
I do not know if he was paid or not.
But she had someone assisting?
She had someone assisting her.
And was not an owner of the property?
No.
I think she had two people there that day.
The first day that I had seen her, on the 15th, she had one individual. His name was Bob, I believe.
Yeah, and the second day she had two.
And the second day, the weekend after, when she had come, she had two people assisting her.
And does this property, is it in the historic district?
Yes, it is.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Do you know if the truck would start and move under its own power?
I do not know. I do not know.
It's just putting plates on it may not satisfy the...
My understanding is that her plates that she's wanting to put on there are historic plates. But I don't know.
Is this a contributing element in the historic history?
Yes.
Yes.
In this photograph here, where there's a doghouse and some bricks, that shed structure there, is that hers, or is that the neighbor's?
That is hers.
Okay, so you got tin falling off the side there, too?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I don't know if you can see from the, on the photograph that is at the back of the shed, where there's kind of a sign in the photograph that says Mary Gold.
Yeah.
Underneath the lean-to on the back of that shed, that roof is falling in.
And I'm assuming from that photograph that that lean-to area, that's just piled with debris, it's just...
It's full.
Right, so there's a good breeding ground roof?
Yes.
All sorts of things.
Mr. Hook, that was, the roof is falling in on that lean-to section.
Now, the car being there, unlicensed and unoperable or unoperated for 10 days, is specifically bound to be a nuisance in our code, is that correct?
Actually, it's 14 days, but yes.
14 days. And the vegetation is a continuing responsibility of property owners, so even if it's cut today, there could very well be another complaint or a charge in Munich Court to punishment of not cutting your grass. The containers that are in the back is a danger to the community because of mosquitoes and vermin.
That is correct.
There is a limb hanging on the property that could be a danger to someone else's property, is that correct?
It could be. If it falls, yes. Right now, it's being supported by another, I guess, smaller tree in the back, but it still appears to be connected at the top of the tree.
So the tree itself has some limbs that, for whatever reason, were damaged, and they're balanced precariously on her property?
Yes.
And if they fall, it could damage the property of a neighbor?
It's possible, yes.
Yes, okay. Do you all have any other questions? I think we have a neighbor here who wants to be sworn and testify, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry, I want to do one more thing. As a board, do you accept all of her testimony and her documents into the record? Make a motion to do that, please.
Motion to accept all the evidence presented. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sam Ewing.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth in that convention?
Sure.
State your name, please.
My name is Sam Ewing. I'm at 28 South Main. I'm at the adjacent property next door.
And you've heard Carla's testimony?
Yes. Before I get into any questions from you, I'd like to make a brief statement, if I could.
Well, I want to make sure that you've heard her testimony.
Yes, I've heard everything she's said, and it's been very accurate.
And you'd like to supplement or give the board some background?
Sure. And answer any questions that you might have.
Now, the odd, not the odd thing, but the thing that we're talking about today, though, is the condition of the property today.
Sure.
If there's some background, that's fine. We put the background in to make sure that the board knew that there had been efforts made to communicate with her. But we're not charging her with not having an occupancy permit. It's what it is today. Okay, go ahead.
First off, my statement deals with specifically, nothing to do with her living conditions in the house and her personal being, have an occupancy permit, or the house being occupied. Mine is strictly related to the outside appearance of the house, the complaints, and the processes that have occurred over 17 months, that I've had to deal with this issue when I first came back in March, before I moved back into my previous, where I'm living now. So it's been, this has been going on for 17 months. It's not just an overnight thing. Ultimately, at one time, I had my property surveyed, and I put a fence, an eight-foot fence, around the property, all except on the one neighbor's side, and it already had a six-foot fence. And I, during that survey, I purposely left about six or eight inches so I could go into that side of my property and weed eat against my fence, so it wouldn't come out underneath my fence. When I got back into the property from living in Topeka, my neighbor had put up a privacy fence of her own, and I could no longer go into that without going behind my property. I used to have a slip there that I could just walk back there and do, and do a weed eating. Now I cannot do that. So I assumed that she didn't want me on her property, so I stayed off of her property at all times. My issue is many other issues that are, to me, are nuisances. I have to deal with continuous water drainage and runoff from the house that goes on my I have to deal with continuous water drainage and runoff from the house that goes on my, that goes on to my property. And sometimes in the deep rain, like this last week, we had a torrential downpour of about an inch or two, and it flooded my, it flooded not only the street, it flooded my property coming off of her roof onto my property. And I've addressed that issue, talked to her about that issue several times. The other major concern that I have is we have, I guess, state federal ordinances about lead paint, and you can't, I guess a house owner can remove paint if it's on his own property. Her, she has a piece of property, the property next to me is continuously, I have to go up there and rake up all the paint that falls off her building onto my driveway. I have a dog, and so I want to make sure that it's safe for my dog to go outside, walk it, and if it happened to get there into that paint, it might harm it. And anytime during dry weather, that continuously flakes off that property, and that concerns me. My main concern was a couple of weeks ago, she had two large limbs fall, and one of them was on my fence, and I did move, go around and kind of drag the limbs off of my fence, because I didn't want, I didn't know how much damage it had done to my fence, I didn't know if there was any problem later on. You asked the question, is a secondary limb a danger to property owners? It's not to me, I've looked at it, and it would not hurt me unless it took the whole tree towards my, towards my fence. I don't know about the other property owner. So those are the issues that I have, continuously dealing with the vegetation. My whole backyard is nothing more than weeds now. Limbs falling off, her limbs from her side that I have to pick up. I can attest to you that I can't even stay in my backyard very long without a long-sleeved shirt on, because I just get eaten up with mosquitoes. Now, I don't know if that's relevant, or other people that at this time of year have done that, but I've noticed since living here seven or eight years ago, an increase in mosquitoes. And that's when I brought to Carla, the main issue was, there was so much open water on her property, that, you know, you just couldn't, you just couldn't believe what I had to deal with. My wife couldn't even go back there and weed. I've got weeds back there myself that would violate the seven inch, because I just can't keep up with it.
I have a question to either one of you. So the water runoff from the ponding or collection of water, that, are there no gutters, are the gutters inoperable, or that there's so much debris that it just can't flow off the property? I mean, what do you...
The gutter on my side that's where water flows into is not, is operable, but not sufficient. But I will have to also admit that I have round historical gutters, and they're not sufficient, sometimes do with a metal roof.
Well, in the downpours, hardly anything is sufficient, but... I was just trying to ascertain, if the junk were cleaned up, would it let the water flow off the property in a better manner, or is that just...
You would, I would...
Probably a separation.
I would be giving you supposition.
Yeah, right, okay.
Mr. Ewing, would you say that the condition of this property has affected your quality of life?
It's affected my quality of life in the sense that I have to work harder to try to keep my property cleaner.
Right.
Personally, it's, to me, and I say this with all due respect, because I mean this to no harm, it's an eyesore. It's in an historical district. I tried to sell my property for six years, and the two reasons that, and this, I can give you nothing more than hearsay here, what was told to me, but the two reasons that I would, my property did not sell was, I did not have a downstairs bathroom. Well, you probably remember me from last year, I put a downstairs bathroom on my back of my property, on my porch, and gone through code, it's not great finish, it should be in the next week or so. The second one is, the people who came in to view my property says it's a beautiful house, but they would have lived next to it, it's probably like that. Now, if that doesn't, if that affects my quality of life, I don't want to move from here. I chose to live here. But it doesn't, if that's a quality of life issue, that's, I would say, yes.
Because I hope you realize that the reason we're here tonight is to try to help you and try to get this straightened out, okay? This, you know, this is...
Well, it's not just helping me, I'm not the only one.
Yeah, I realize that, okay, but we're trying to get this taken care of and get some things straightened out, so please bear with us, okay?
I have for 17 months.
It's been a problem a lot longer than 17 months.
I know that. I have dealt with the gentleman that owned the property, but at least he was, when I was here before, he was cognizant and he was very amiable, made himself available to be, to have problems given to him. He was a hoarder, in my opinion, but still, he was a man that tried to keep his property to the best of his ability. My problem is I can never, I just can't find anybody.
Now, the condition of the property is not just aesthetic, it's not just the way that it looks, it's the way that it affects adjoining property owners, is that correct?
That's correct.
Because some people like certain kinds of ugly bushes or...
But that's, that's a sticky situation to get in right there.
No, I'm just saying that we're approaching this as how it affects you.
Yeah, my issue also becomes entryway into that property of rodents and vermin, and there's holes in the siding. When I walked by there earlier than the year, I personally heard birds and squirrels in the windows. I saw, I've seen animals move in and out of the property. This is previous to that, so I won't, I won't talk about the cat situation, but there's many cats that go in and out of the property.
I personally have seen squirrels go in and out of that building.
You can't say that unless you're sworn.
Sorry.
So you'll disregard that, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, please? I just want to make sure that this doesn't happen to another homeowner. I feel like, and this is, I'm saying this respectfully, this should have been addressed sooner than this. This process should not have taken 17 months.
Well, I think we're moving on the right way right now.
Well, I'm sure you are, I understand that, but it still doesn't, that still does not negate the 17-months' burden that I've had to deal with it.
Right.
And I say that in all respect, but sometimes your hands are tied.
Yeah.
But is that, I ask this all in the committee and the city administrator and the mayor, is this reasonable? Is 17 months reasonable to handle an issue like this?
I don't know.
I think, I think not.
But also, at the same time, I think we're running toward the same thing, we're trying to get where we need to get and where you're going to be happy, and we can take care of the problem, okay? So I think we're going that way, all right?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is this process going to set a timeline for this occurring?
Yeah, I think it will. Bone of the card? Yeah, we're going to set a timeline.
Are we looking at weeks, months, years?
If they find a nuisance, the property owner's given the first 20 days to abate, to whatever this board goes into deliberation and determines, what is it going to take to abate? Is there a nuisance, and what is the abatement requirement? And the property owner gets 20 days before the city can step in and do it ourselves?
But under, wasn't this property owner given an abatement before this date?
Well, the process of appeals and hearings and so forth requires delivery of notice to the property owner. We've got a property owner, as you well know, is hard to make contact with.
But according to your guidelines and ordinances, all you have to do is post it somewhere reasonable. You don't have to contact her, in fact, I can read it for you if you want me to.
Well, we're going to follow it as we believe the code reads.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to follow your rules and regulations and your codes.
The hearing tonight is not about whether or not the city could have done a better job, it's about what is the condition of the property.
Well, I'd like to come, I'd like to come back to this all in the meeting sometime and talk about that.
That's your privilege.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
I've got one for Carla, on the second page, right bottom picture. Do we know what's in those containers? There's liquid in those plastic jugs?
We don't know for sure.
Right, we don't know if they're hazardous or...
I don't know.
Can I make a statement? I'm still under oath.
Sure.
I think that's water. I'm not sure, but I've, I used to see her carrying her own water when she had, was living in the house, in jugs, so I would assume that that's what was underneath. I don't know of all of them, but I assume that that's what they were.
That other, that large, is that a hammet?
That's a pond, that was full of water, and that was one of the items that was turned over.
Oh, okay.
It's like one of these pre-made, preformed ponds.
Little polypond or something.
Right, yeah, right.
It's just turned over. Thank you.
Okay, that is the conclusion of the evidence that's going to be presented to you. The process is for you to go into closed session and deliberate.
Do we need to accept his testimony or...
Yes, I would, you need to move any additional comments that were made by the witnesses, accept that as into the record.
Move to accept those comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And is the hearing closed?
Yeah, now you need a motion to, the one to close session.
Before the hearing closes, or the hearing is closed?
Oh, I'm sorry, the hearing is closed. Well, you, motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it noted 6:13.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second?
And roll call.
Alderwoman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Print?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Start that process.
Yeah.
I mean, there are numerous properties the same as what she has going on.
Yeah, well, we're doing it this way because we have a remedy if we have to do it ourselves. And we don't want, we don't want a fine from her, and then leave the property in its bad condition. The other part of the delay would be efforts of trying to work with her. And it did take a long time. I would say, we probably bent over backwards, and then you had a little bit of transition with your, with your staff. But I honestly think that, in a community of our size, every once in a while, you have one or two property owners that just somehow manage to wiggle out of everything we try to do, whether it's a bank, or a railroad, or whatever. And I, I'm of the opinion that, as a staff, we did, we did pretty well.
And you've given her every chance in the world.
You're going to get criticized.
And fully understanding that people have problems in their life, and, you know, you're going above and beyond.
If you measure, if you measure the success of your, of Carla and staff, they do one heck of a job with 99% of the property owners. They respond to a phone call even. But that 1%, ends up being a case like this.
Right.
Can we go, just so we don't spend another month on building part, can we start this process over on the building side of it?
I think, I think you're going to need to come back before this board, just like you did here, because that's what finally got attention, when it was put in the newspaper, that you're going to have a hearing about it. And so, between Martin and Carla, and maybe the, I don't know, you know, if, if this lead paint that's falling on somebody's property, you're going to have to test it. We can test it.
Yeah. Well, I, I agree with the mayor. I mean, I think postage, let's, let's get moving on it, you know? Whatever part needs to be done first, I say let's do it pronto.
Right, you need a motion to open session regarding the findings of fact, conclusions of law that we discussed in closed session.
I make a motion to accept the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and all the evidences presented and discussed, and we move forward. Was that, I mean, what else do you need there?
That's it?
Okay. Second. I second that motion.
What call?
Of course.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McDermott. This meeting-
This meeting. The meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Your, wait, wait, what you said, what you were talking about, was that a meeting, work session, whatever?
Probably work session would be sufficient, I would think.
Okay. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, we'll go back to the work session.
Does Carla get this back, or how do we do it?
They're not going, they're a color record.
Okay, all right.
I think she has to get a formal complaint first, from a citizen.
Okay, Pam, we will assemble to file the board's testimony and the documents that she filed. And that will be the, the record of this nuisance hearing. Does clerk's record will say that the board adopted this?
Okay. Carla has prepared this budget. Under personnel, has been our policy, we, we don't make any amendments to the salaries because that's left in prescription of the law. However, since we've had personnel changes, we've adjusted the salary line item to the current payroll. So it appears to have gone down, it has gone down from prior year, but the figure that's there is a figure without any raises for the staff, and that will be true for every budget received, until you consider, whether or not you want to move on that.
That's it?
No, I think portion, that's taken.
Okay.
Isn't there as well? Like a quarter, maybe?
Billy, it's how it used to be.
Yeah.
So, Carla, don't you discuss any item that is higher than it was in the prior year, and your rationale for that?
Okay, so, the first line that went up would have been under-
Might just come up at the table, or go to the podium, or something.
Carla, since it's on, I don't know how well he can hear.
He can hear as well as he can hear right now.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so, the first line where there was an increase would have been under employee insurance, and that's just because-
You don't have any control over the personnel, so forget about that.
Over that, okay, so, we're going below materials and supplies and, and that, okay.
So you went-
So postage went up just because I went, I've gone over budget this year on postage and things that were sent out. So I just wanted to make sure that-
You will go over, you haven't quite yet, but, or maybe you are now.
I am now.
That's okay.
Let's see. Also, in publishing, line 602-2, it was 450. I went at 500 to just make sure that everything was covered as far as any, any publishing expenses, because that was running, ran over.
And that would be publishing like notices of this meeting, and that kind of thing?
Yes, yes. Everything else so far, until you get down to the very bottom, nope. Here we go. Special services, line 7060, line, yes, 7060. Last year, the board approved to, to give $5,000 towards downtown renewal, and that was for special projects. There were projects of, I think, if, when I'm looking at, back at the notes, there was railroad trestle painting, it could have been spent on wayfinding signs, Gage Park, and benches, I believe. They are currently, I spoke with Kara Burt with downtown renewal, they are currently working on their meeting Monday that they intend to have, will be for their final approval, and they've got a grant in addition that will spend the existing $5,000 that was allotted to them last year.
And it's for signage?
And it would go towards wayfinding signs, yes. And that would be spent in this year's budget. So my request, since I was able to reduce my budget, I was requesting to add another $5,000 to give to downtown renewal. Because I went last week to the Missouri Main Street Connection, and I've seen from different communities, the difference that it makes when you have a city and a main street, when you've got a cooperative. They have partnered with the chamber, and if they can partner with us, it'll just open that up even more. And if there's a little bit more that we could give them, it would only help in trying to revitalize the downtown area, which would, in turn, increase revenue, increase community involvement.
Now, I recall a conversation when we considered this last year, you were concerned that it'd be spent for projects, and items to improve the downtown environment, as opposed to travel expenses, or buying books, or whatever.
Now, after speaking with Kara, she did state that even though they do not have a specific item at this time that they would like to spend that money on, they would like to be able to come to the board before anything would be spent, and request approval for any project that they would like to spend that, those funds on. I, this is something I mentioned last year when this came up, and I don't want this to be taken as, I don't want the money spent in that area, because I think it's a good thing to put some money towards. I don't like, are we writing a $5,000 check made out to downtown renewal project? Or are we saying, here's a bench, and it costs $500, and the city is paying that company for the bench? Yes, I believe that's the way that it's being done now. Is that correct?
Hasn't been, hasn't been done yet.
It hasn't been done yet, but that's the way that it would be done.
Yeah.
It's something that is staying here, and-
So we're going to keep a very tight rein on-
There will be accountability on what is spent.
We're just setting $5,000 aside. Aside for it, we're not turning it over to-
Right.
That is correct.
But they don't have any resources, so we can't make it a reimbursement program.
Exactly.
We don't want to get an open check.
Exactly. No, and if that, I mean-
But based off everything I've seen them do so far, I do think it's going to be money well-spent, just with the efforts that they have made with everything else so far.
I agree. I know some people that have some differing opinions than that, and have some experience being on one of the committees and on the board, and are concerned with how some of their funds are being handled. So that's why I just want to make sure that we're just not writing a check to them, that we are actually-
We are spending the money.
We are spending the money on the physical item, or the service, or whatever it might be.
I say, I can go along with it if we have control over it, as far as where specifically it's going, and not just an open.
Right. I want to write the check to the company that's providing the product or the service, I don't want to write the check to downtown.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
I think we all need, yeah.
Right. I agree. Good point.
So you're talking about adding five under this?
I am.
113?
Yes. So it would be, no, 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 no.
But, you know, and still, Carla, once again, instead of saying, well, we're going to give you five, but we don't know what you want it for, I would like to have some idea of what they want the five for.
Right.
You know, I don't want, I don't want to put $5,000 in a budget, and they don't know what they're going to use it for, and they come up something later on and say-
It's been nine months.
Yeah.
Actually, last year was five.
Yeah, I know.
I'm asking for 10.
You're asking for an extra 10?
No, 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 I'm asking for another-
Another five? Right, right, okay.
So another five.
But are you going to spend that five from last year before this budget's over?
Yes, that's what, that's what, that's what they're saying, is, they're having a meeting Monday, and they will be, and their intent, she's supposed to come to you on Monday and let you know that they are going, they want to be on the agenda next week to come before the board about spending the $5,000. Because before, before we, I mean, I can't speak for anyone else, but before I would want to approve another $5,000, I would want to see what they're doing with what we allocated last year.
I couldn't get it out quick enough. That was my next thing, is I want to see where specifically did the last five go?
Yeah.
What did, what did we get for it, before we just go, you know?
And I do agree with that.
I have no problem with putting more money towards making any part of this town better, obviously.
But we need to spend wisely.
But I want to know what it's going to.
Right.
Specifically. And I'm not asking for an additional five over what my budget is. I've actually cut my budget. My budget is still almost $7,000 below what it was last year.
Right. Excellent.
So.
Thanks, Carla.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I think we just need a little more information on that one item.
One thing I think we, one thing that, we'll leave it in here, I think we'll leave it in here for now, certainly as we get through to the rest of the budgets.
Yeah, we have time for them to come to us.
That's in, the 113, an extra 10?
Yeah, the, yes.
And we'll see where it's at, but I think one thing that needs to definitely be a priority, although I think we can still get some of it done this year in this budget, and we do have-
I also don't like getting down to the point where you've got a month to go, so you've got to spend this $5,000. I'm wondering if they, you know, why wasn't this plan before what you were spending this on?
We allocated $5,000 to the park board, and they, you know, they came up with a plan right away.
Yeah.
That's, that's what concerns me. And they're stretching it, and they're, yeah.
Well, let's just see what it is.
Okay.
But I also think that we look at this, and it's going to obviously be used in the downtown area, but I think one thing that, that we need to look at coming out of somewhere is to make sure that we've got the sidewalks, and the trees, and the stuff down there that, that need some attention, that, that is somewhere in the budget.
And maybe that's part of it.
Somewhere.
Which reminds me, who gave the authority to go in front of Reinhart's and the other place and cut down the trees?
Citizens did that.
By, who, who, who asked to have that done?
It's, replacing those trees was on that plan that the committee formulated.
But once in, citizens elected would not come and cut them down, who asked to have them down?
No, no, citizens asked. Came and said, we're going to need to cut these trees down.
All right.
Are they going to take the stumps out so that another tree can be replanted in the place?
And we're going to change the infiltration zone, because putting another tree in that little four-by-four, well, you'll be right back where you started, Carla. So we're going to increase, cut out the sidewalk, and put grates in to increase the infiltration zone, so the trees have a chance to survive without having the roots come up to find water.
Sounds like a good project for downtown.
There's no sense, you don't want to plant a tree in August.
What kind of trees we going to open in?
Well, we open for suggestions, but Citizen has a list of trees that they have recommended, and they're non, crab apple without apples, and red, red, red something, and some kind of maple tree.
Would that be a crab apple-ish tree?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Eric, you had a few things.
I just had a quick question.
Thanks, Carla. Thank you.
Carla, where you going?
Thanks, Carla. I don't know that I need to come up there much.
Yeah, come on.
Oh, on down.
So, with the vehicle replacement plan, we sold three cars, two cars, we gave one car to the school, leased it to them. We made $3,800 on the sale of the two cars. During the last budget process, it was suggested by Alderman Stupi that we look at a golf cart instead of a side-by-side UTV. I was going to see what the temperature of the board would be if I looked at purchasing a golf cart with the money that we made from selling the two patrol cars, that'd be downtown patrol at night, jury fed, county fair, things like that. It wouldn't be used every day, but, but I think that we would get some-
And not used in lieu of patrol cars?
Not in lieu of patrol cars.
In addition to your current-
Yes. Should, should our short-staffed officers get a call while they're out in downtown patrol, they wouldn't run back to their car and respond to the call that, that was pending? But it's certainly within our spending limit, I'm, I'm thinking it'll be around $3,000.
Have you not hit some?
Yes. Yes, I've contacted some golf cart companies.
It's just kind of the unique stuff.
We just want to show up with a golf cart, and everybody say, wait a minute, why did we do this? That's the worst idea that I've ever heard of.
Well, we did that years ago with bicycles.
You guys call them now? That's what you're doing?
They drive bicycles for a while.
Right.
Still got them now?
No, no, they were shut off a couple years ago.
What else did we drive about two years ago?
Motorcycles.
Motorcycles, bicycles?
I love to drive motorcycles, yes, but-
You up for that?
Absolutely. But I just, if anybody thinks it's a horrible idea, then we certainly won't.
I don't think it is.
I think it's an appropriate use of the funds that you got from selling the car, too.
Yeah, we just didn't want to show up with-
I can see why it would come in handy, I really do.
Oh, yeah, for events. I mean, as much as we do in downtown.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
See, no problem with that, was it?
Okay.
Any other business?
I don't want to adjourn. Never mind.
I'm taking these, any other business?
No, no, it works out.
They just in.
Well, it's still a good term anyway, we make-
Formally, so we formally know we finished.
You must be listening to KTRS.